Evening. And thank you for your patience for starting our council meeting an hour later. May I have roll call, please? Here.
Still here.
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 Here, and would the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Now, we appreciate Caroline Goodwin coming this evening. And she has a poem that we saw at the Board of Supervisors meeting a month ago. And Caroline is here. Yes, yes. I went to the Board of Supervisors when Carol Groom was voted in as Chair. And there was this lovely young woman that recited a poem. And she is the San Mateo County Poet Laureate. And it was just so beautiful and it felt like it had a lot of impact here because she mentioned snowy plovers that we love so much. So please welcome Caroline Goodwin to the podium here because she can read her poem a lot better than I could. Thank you so much for joining us and thank you for waiting, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me and making a space for poetry. And I am so proud and so excited for what's going to happen with the library. It was, I've been all over the county to the beautiful libraries that we have. And it's really going to be wonderful to watch this happen. I'm really, really proud and grateful. And I just wanted to tell you very quickly about the poet laureate program in San Mateo County. Half Moon Bay has a lot of poets, a lot of young poets. The coast has a lot of poets. Right now, there is a poetry campaign called Poetry Is Love. And if you go on the San Mateo County Poet Laureate website, you will see where to submit your own poem, all during the month of February, to be featured on our website. There are a lot of people from Half Moon Bay High School there already. And you can find, pick up one of these over there on the table. Send us your poems in Spanish, in English, in any language, poems about love. And this is a poem that I wrote after the big storm that we had. And it's a poem that explores the connections for me between social and environmental activism. And I say plover, maybe it's plover. Maybe I should learn how to actually pronounce the snowy.
I could be saying it wrong, too.
I've never really quite known, actually. So it's a good thing I'll find out and I'll let everyone know. But this is, this is a poem called "When the Rain." And again, thank you so much for making space for poetry. "When the Rain." When we watch over the beach, over the snowy plover seeking shelter in the couch grass. When we hold our hands open to the west and forget ourselves in the narrow corridor in filaments of sunlight that remain. When we detect the first dry leaves along the pavement scratching at our arms. And remember the blood in Ferguson, in Jasper, in Iguala, in our streets. When we pause, when the trees light up our living rooms with silver tinsel and ornaments. When we drink the clear water, the clean water. When the sky returns to its feathered clouds in stillness and we come out. Let us come out with our eyes open and with our hearts prepared for both the battle and the feast. Thank you. And pick up Poetry Is and send us your poems.
Thank you very much. I don't have any community activities to talk about. Does council? Oh, yeah. Tomorrow. Do you want to go ahead and talk about it? Go ahead.
I just have one thing. I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring it up. But I would really like to encourage staff to continue with the job that they've actually already started on getting us a Spanish translator for our council meetings, as well as the headsets and the earphones and the things, special mics that you need. In addition, I'd like to see all of the publications that come out of our city with our City of Half Moon Bay name on it translated into Spanish in the same, same piece of paper. I think with 32% of our population Spanish-speaking, it's unfair not to encourage them to understand what's going on in our city, their city.
That's, that's a great suggestion. Perhaps we can have all of that explored and analyzed and come back during the budget session. I know that there's some cost implications. It's not just photographing. But I, as we saw earlier this evening, and thank you for doing double duty as being a translator as well, that, you know, made an impact for many people that are here. So that's, that's great that you mentioned that and bring that back, you know, when we get through everything. And maybe there's a partnership with schools or two. So thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. And yes, thank you for reminding me. Tomorrow night, we have the unveiling of our new vehicle electric charging station. That's going to be downtown. Celebration's at 5:00. We've got some electric vehicles that will be there on display, some information about them. And it's going to be free for the next month. And then from there, we're going to explore what's a good pricing model, but one that's convenient for people. So that'll be outside of City Hall, 5:00 tomorrow. Any other events coming up you'd like to share? All right. And can we have a report out from council on closed session?
Yes, there were two items on the closed session agenda this evening. Mayor Fraser, members of the city council. The first was a liability claim, the claim of Louise Rattan, W-R-A-T-T-E-N. The second item on the closed session agenda was a performance evaluation of the city attorney. The closed session began at 5:30 before your 6:00 PM workshop session, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. We go now to city council reports. And we'll start off with council member Reddick.
Council member Kowalczek and I had our first meeting at the sewer authority Midco side as the city's representatives and approved several items, including emergency repair to the inner Thai pipeline system. I was elected vice chair of SAM. And council member Kowalczek was elected to be the city's representative on the Recycled Water Committee. And so that was that meeting. I missed, unfortunately, the chamber event. I was in Burbank for work, but I understand several of you attended, and I'd like to hear that report. We also went to the Council of Cities Dinner and heard about aggregate energy purchases that might save, you know, the city and the county money by, you know, buying as a group and buying green energy. So that was pretty interesting, and hopefully we'll get more details on that. So that's it.
Did you attend the council members' academy during that time? Or was that before?
That was, I think we reported on that at the last meeting.
That's right. Thank you. Council member Mueller?
Yes, thank you. Also, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting and the past, the media past mayor gets to give an award. And I was privileged to give it to Erin Torme, who has done a lot of tremendous work on the community, on many organizations, spearheaded Farmers Market Heal Program and just numerous, numerous. And I think we almost surprised her. She was fairly shocked. But it was a well-deserved award for Erin. And I would hope the mayor and I neglect it to bring it home. But I think we have to hear from our city manager's award sometime this evening. And I left the paper at home. But hopefully she knows what her award was all about because without a doubt, it was very prestigious recognition of our city manager. So that's all I have at the moment.
Council member Kowalczek? Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Oh, sure. I'm happy to go.
I just thought you were clearing your throat. It's me.
So just a couple of things. So we had council member Reddick and I did, as she mentioned, attended the SAM meeting. And continued good, positive collaboration there and with the member agencies. And it's always challenging when you have these three competing entities. And so we just keep things on a positive footing. And I'm very happy to be on the Recycled Water Subcommittee. See, and then just the last thing is want to comment. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make the ribbon cutting for the electric vehicle charging station, but that was one of my pet things. I'm really happy about that. And I think it's good for the community. It's good for marketing. It's good for a lot of things. So happy to see that go in. So fill her up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Penrose?
Yes. We actually had our first electric car use the charging station today. Somebody pulled up and plugged in. Pretty neat, yeah. I went to the Council of Cities Dinner and had a wonderful time there with Mayor Fraser and Councilwoman Reddick. And very interested in the ideas that they have about renewable energy and purchasing our own energy. I attended my first committee meeting, the mobility meeting with Mayor Fraser, and I'll let her talk to you about that. But it was fun. I learned a lot. I think that's all.
Thank you. Yes, mobility, it's talking about the transportation routes, safe routes, highway, bikes, the whole thing. So laying out some things, and you'll hear more of that in the future. Some of it is plans and funding that was received a while ago. But we can bring it back forward to everyone in the next few months as we continue to meet over this. So that was good. And also, congratulations on being vice chair of SAM. Thank you. It was a surprise. That's good. All the power to you there. And the chamber event was wonderful. There was a lot of wonderful awards given out to some very community-minded people. It was a nice dinner over at the Oceana. And I was privileged to give an award to Mark and Jane Batty, an innovation award. Many of you know them. They've had several businesses here on the coast. And they were really some great, they've been involved in so many community projects, but one of them was the new senior complex that they were in from the right, right from the beginning in raising funds for that. They now have Miramar Farms, which is a corporate retreat, which is beautiful, set back in the hills. And also, the city manager, we are so pleased and honored. She achieved from her fellow city mayors throughout the state, an ethics award. It was one of the highest awards that your peers can give you. Did you, if you'd like to read it, because I think it's very impressive.
Well, I can read the whole press release. I think it's about 600 words. But we'll go with the first paragraph. So it's the Ethical Hero Award, which, I think hero is very fitting. It tells you how much weight is behind this award. So the International City County Management Association's California affiliate has presented Half Moon Bay City Manager Magda Gonzalez with its Ethical Hero Award for 2015. This distinguished award, one of the highest honors that can be bestowed by ICMA, recognizes and honors Mrs. Gonzalez for her service in the local government profession. It was presented on January 28th. She was thrilled, smiled, shook hands, and suitably applauded.
And to the city manager, last month or last meeting, I had attended one of the first community aggregate meetings at CCAG. And, you know, councilman Penrose and Reddick saw the presentation, too. They're looking for a letter of just interest in that. And they need it by the end of the month. I don't know if it has to be run through us for approval, or is that something that you can send off? Because I know it was being presented to city managers. And they just want to know that there is, is interest to explore that. If you could look into that, and then we'll have further information. It's a multi-year process, and it will be out in the community, too. But they're just looking for support.
I think they wanted that by the end of this month, was it?
By the 28th or so. Yes, so that's, let me do that. Yes. Yes, council member Penrose?
Yeah, I forgot. I went to the Farm Bureau Farm Day. What is it called?
Farm Bureau Annual Award Meeting.
Farm Bureau Annual Award Meeting. And that was a lot of fun. I saw a lot of people I hadn't seen in a long time. It's a great evening.
And thank you for mentioning that because Farmer of the Year, we're good friends of ours, Louis and Mike Yocapi, very well deserved to be Farmer of the Year. Thank you for remembering that. Yeah, you didn't remember Farmer. All right, we will move on now to city manager updates.
Thank you very much. I wanted to let, let the council know, remind the council that we will be launching the Half Moon Bay Community News. It will be an electronic newsletter that will go out once a week. It will go out, I think tomorrow will be the first one, hopefully. Tomorrow will be the first one. So it'll be, I ask for your patience because it'll be the first few, and we're trying to make that go, make that move very smoothly. Alex, our deputy city manager, has a sheet here that we should have announced earlier. We'd love for the community to give us their name and their email address so that they can receive it in their box. It'll also be on our website. But if you give us your email address, if the community gives us their email address, we can make sure it arrives in their inbox automatically. And we're very excited about that. You remember, I made a commitment to try to improve the communication with the community, and this is one step in making that happen.
Thank you. Public forum, and I'm just not sure if this is scratched out. Melissa Spikes, are you here? Did you have a general comment or a comment on, an item on the agenda?
A general comment about the neighborhood connection plan.
It is public forum. Yes, please, please join at the podium. It's, is it for the general plan?
For the general plan.
Oh, she did? So it's not time yet? Yeah, sorry. So I have no public forum at this meeting, but I do have one note on the agenda. Item number five, the Surfers Beach MOU is revised a little bit. So what revisions are in here that would make a difference to, can you point that out to council? Was it just a small revision? Just want to know if we can include it in the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dante.
The only addition was the actual amendment. We were working to get that finalized. Excuse me. But the resolution and the actual amendment and staff report are all consistent.
All right, thank you. So that can be included in a motion for consent if that's the council's pleasure. And I'll entertain a motion now. So move? You may. All right.
So seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye, thank you. We'll go now to staff report number eight. That's the general plan study session follow-up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may just provide a couple of comments. We had a study session at the last council meeting regarding the general plan. And study sessions are a good way to try to have the council, give the council an opportunity to have a little bit more meaty discussion, similar to what was happening with the library today. Unfortunately, we ran out of time a bit. I got a couple of comments from council members that they felt that they were a bit rushed at the end because we ran into the regular meeting. And so this is just an opportunity to allow the council to provide any additional comments if they would like. So like, we have people available to answer questions. Nothing has changed. We've not done anything different since the last time we had a council meeting, but really just wanted to provide an opportunity because this is a, a big effort and it's been graded just by the community. So there may not be anything, or there may.
Thank you. I had asked to just bring it back for clarification. I'd wrote several different notes. And I thought we were focusing on some things, but I just wasn't completely clear. I think there was a few things that we talked about we wanted to focus on instead of the whole big giant picture. And so that's why I wanted to bring this back for, I guess, verification, focusing on something. And we do have, so while you're looking at it, or if you're thinking about it, we do have two public comment requests. So would we like to hear that now? Heads nodding? Okay. So Melissa, yes. Melissa Spikes, followed by George Mutov.
Melissa Spikes, I'm a Highland Park resident. So this is my first city council meeting. Bear with me. What brings my family out, and me and my family out tonight, is the Neighborhood Connection Plan. So after reviewing the plan, I just want to say I'm totally for the bike and trail, the trail, walking trail and bike trails. I think that's awesome, and that's something that Half Moon Bay really needs around here. But what I would like to say I strongly disagree with is the roads being built, the part of the plan that says that the roads are going to be built to go through the neighborhoods. I have two little kids that, you know, play outside along with other kids in the neighborhood. And I just think that creates a risk for cars that are driving down Highway 1 to be speeding through the neighborhoods. And right now, we have a quite safe neighborhood. That's what brought us here to Half Moon Bay to purchase a home. So I'm strongly against the roads being built, but I would like to say that I would love to see the bike trails as well as walking trails in the neighborhoods here.
Thank you, Melissa, and welcome to your first city council meeting. I'll have staff give you some information after we have some comments. But there's no roads going through there.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Thanks.
But they'll, they'll share more. George Mutov?
Good evening. I'm here to speak to the general plan update. In looking at the current general plan, it's relatively easy to see that, number one, it needs revision, and number two, that the authors had no more crystal ball than we do now. The optimum results of an update of this document, this roadmap of where we want to go and be over time, needs some basic ingredients if we are to get a fair and solid document guiding us forward. First and foremost is public engagement and participation. The more, the merrier. Right alongside that is the goal of creating the best document possible, as opposed to having a rigid timeline for results. It is, after all, the quality of the efforts and the results that is most important, not a timeline. And alongside that, we need to appreciate the fact that the update is more a broader lens view than a detailed view, unlike the LCP-LUP update, for example, where every pixel can be and in some cases, has been explored and analyzed. Here are a few thoughts that might make the general plan update result a more solid document for all. Number one, Half Moon Bay is a one-of-a-kind town and has a direct impact on all coastside residents and property owners. And as such, all coastside residents and property owners should not only be afforded the opportunity for inclusion, but should be sought out and embraced for input and participation. Next, the update should be recognized for what it is, a flexible overview and a guiding light for what we'd like to see going forward. It should be inclusive, not exclusive. It seems intuitive that creating options, even if they're not implemented in the future, would serve us all better than eliminating those same options. After all, none of us know what tomorrow brings, let alone five, 10, 20 years from now. In seeking public participation, every effort should be made to include all that will or may be directly affected by the outcome. For example, if we're going to consider possible zoning changes for urban reserve zoning, then I believe it only right to have the city notify all UR property owners directly of the update and possible rezoning of their property, coupled with an invitation to join the discussion at a specified date and time of a GPAC meeting, so the committee members and members of the public can hear their concerns and ideas in one place at one time or more. The same would hold with other possible zoning changes like PUDs and others. By making the effort, we all benefit, and a better document will be crafted as a result. Next, all suggestions and points of view, no matter how ridiculous some may think they are, need to be heard. The results, after all, should be a diverse melting pot that reflects who we are and what we want to see going forward. It is important to note that this entire process was initiated by the prior council and as such, precludes the two newest council members, who, like the other three, will be held accountable for the results. Therefore, it is my opinion that the two new council members not only have the right, but an obligation to be included where they can be. For example, the GPAC committee membership should be revisited, and the two new council members should have the opportunity to add members of their choice to make the committee more reflective of their, of the diversity they represent. I like the idea of multiple plans, which is what we see so far, compact core, neighborhood connections, and showcasing the coast. In the end, we will have one plan, which in my view, will benefit from a multiple-plan basis. And in conclusion, I would suggest that this council do their level best to get as much public participation as possible. There are many ways to accomplish that goal, but there is one surefire way to get everybody's attention and input. Place your three proposed plans on the ballot as an advisory measure when they are ready, which is the preferred method, or just the final draft of the proposed signal plan. The cost is negligible relative to the value, and is a cheap insurance policy for those responsible for the update. If you really want to know what folks think of the plan that you're going to be held accountable for, ask them. And when they do, listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steph, can you share? And councilmember Penrose and I learned a lot yesterday that the misnomer of there's roads in the middle of some of these housing tracks, it's really bike and pedestrian. And to clarify that, there's going to be a full range of workshops and a schedules being prepared. This is based on input from last time's meeting.
I'll ask our community development director to answer those questions specifically. And if I may, I didn't do a very good job of introducing the topic. I also just want to remind the council and the community that the item that was, that we're bringing back, while happy to hear about the comments in terms of the specifics, really it's about, it was a process check-in and understanding that there's going to be lots of opportunities for community input that our community development director will talk about.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We have listened to the people, and we have made several adjustments to the maps. The way the process was scheduled was to work with the GPAC, deliver or put out the existing conditions report. And we did that. And that has been on the street probably about 10 months now. And it has included a lot of the information that people have asked for. So we have taken that information out and overlaid it over suggestions. So I don't think it should be a surprise that the maps are changing based on public input. Originally, what we wanted to do was go back and work with the, with the GPAC and determine a public outreach process. What we, as staff, had envisioned were things like speaker series, walking tours, workshops, different ways to engage all levels and, and members of our community. That's what we still anticipate. And this isn't the first time or the last time that people will be able to make suggestions. And we hope to come back to the decision-makers with a plan that everybody can embrace.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm sorry. The specific question was about the neighborhoods in the Highland Park. Currently, there are no roads proposed through the Highland Park neighborhood. The maps are available on Plan H and B or the city's website. The trails that, or the lines that you see are actually connections through pedestrian trails, bicycle trails, or things like that. But there are no cut-through roads in the Highland Park neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, if I may, just try to, I think it's keeping staff up at night and keeping some of us up at night, thinking about all the input that's been shared with the general plan. And I think it's becoming clear that it's going to take a lot more time and a lot more resources to continue moving forward. So if I may just share with our council and the public just some brief thoughts about what I, I kind of look at how we could maybe refocus the general plan a little bit more. You know, we all know that the downtown core is very, very important to us. You know, we all know that open space and conservation elements are most important to us, and I believe we're not even in compliance with state on that one there. Kind of look at that as a focus. Traffic and the transportation issue continually seems to come up with that, and I think that's very important. And part of that would be with our open space and trails and bike trails and things like that. And not to keep giving them more work, but I think the other part would be, we talked about, the groups have talked about sea level rise and climate change and our carbon footprint, and that all kind of goes into one thing. And so I'd like us to maybe kind of think of that in, as a focus area, to refocus and then... then, once those issues are kind of getting solved and put out to the public's input, then the other top opportunities will be addressed accordingly, because this is a huge undertaking, as you all well know. And so, I'm just giving that as a thought, as a suggestion, to help our staff kind of get focused with the public.
And transportation, I mean, I think that's key, what we were talking about with the mobility, to really focus in on that.
If I may, the mayor, it gives them a little refocus on the whole general plan to get some of those things moving forward possibly, and then come back to the other issues and continue to move those on in a period of the future. Just a thought.
So, Councilmember Mueller, are you suggesting that we might be trying to boil the ocean and, sorry, terrible analogy, but that we're doing too much at one time and to sort of segment or prioritize the focus areas and do some first and kind of not bite off more than we can chew at one time? Is that what you're suggesting? And then, if so, what's in and what are you suggesting is not in, in the near term?
I don't think anything could be out. I just think that if we could possibly give the staff the direction to try to move those couple, three or four items forward with the general plan and the GPAC and the public, it might make it easier for us to move other project, other process through, because there is a lot of misinformation that continues to surface out there of whatever. You know, I don't know. I'm just trying to be helpful to all of us and to staff, because it's a lot of work on general plans, and it doesn't have to be done tomorrow, I don't think. You could help me on that, staff.
Councilmember Ruttig?
Yeah, I think we need to find a way to focus attention. We have three scenarios. We have a set of guiding principles, you know, small-town character, you know, protecting our bluffs and beaches and trails, et cetera. I think we need to have meetings where, you know, the public and, you know, the council and planning commission can actually rate the scenarios as to how they meet, you know, the guiding principles. There's, to me, a lot wrong with all three scenarios. There are some good things in each of them, but I'm not sure that any of them really fulfill the goal of having them match up with the guiding principles. So, how do we, you know, rate their performance in that respect? You know, how do we have meetings to do that? Is it neighborhood meetings? I'm definitely in favor of neighborhood meetings, but, you know, more intensive study and perhaps longer meetings or maybe on the weekend where people can actually, you know, rate these scenarios. For instance, the down, the compact core scenario, to me, doesn't really do much to enhance the historic nature of downtown and Main Street itself. It actually talks more about, you know, some hotels and some strip retail along Kelly Avenue as opposed to actually enhancing, you know, the core area. So, I have issues with each one of those scenarios. I'm sure the public does as well. So, how do we, how do we, you know, tie the principles to the scenarios and give people a chance to, you know, weight them or to pick things out and throw other things away? I think we need to have a process to really zero in, you know, matching up the scenarios. I'm repeating myself, but you get the picture.
I agree, and I think the way we talked about so much, and this is so much, and I think there were some things that seemed to rise above, and so I thought if we could focus, focus more on some particular things that were important to us, I think that's a better conversation to have with the public, and they'll understand and follow instead of, we've got the whole thing out there. And that seems to be confusing people, and it's a lot of work at the same time, and maybe it's a strain, it's not the right work. So, if we could focus exactly what we're doing, maybe smaller, in smaller chunks of it.
And there are those, you know, exercises where people can, you know, pin colors on various scenarios, but I think looking at the scenarios in one big fell swoop is not really the way to do that. Each of those scenarios has components, and how do they match up? So, you know, in order to move forward, I think we need some process to start zeroing in on that. I know I have a lot of input I'd like to give at some point, but on the other hand, I want to hear, you know, from the public that we're going in the right direction. And speaking selfishly, I think it would be great if I could have somebody appointed to the GPAC. I'm not saying take anybody off necessarily, but maybe add some new people. Maybe you want to do that, too. That would be helpful. But yeah, I agree with you, the need to focus, move along, zero in, and make sure we're on the right track. We don't want to be just going off, but the public already thinks we're going off on the right, wrong direction.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, it seems to me there may be two different approaches to zeroing in, and one would be the one that Councilmember Mueller said, where you choose three areas, transportation, coastal bluffs, or I'm not sure what you said, but several things, several areas like that, and concentrate on them, prioritize them. Another one would be to just take neighborhoods and actually go out to the neighborhood and have extensive meeting in the neighborhood, like Councilmember Ruttig mentioned, where you discuss all of their issues and what they like and what they see in the three different options that they like. And it seems to me with that scenario, you immediately involve the public. So, you're going to get much more feedback, much more quickly, about what's going to work for the public.
If I may, just for a second, there is a definite public engagement phase of this, and it hasn't started yet. So, I hear the comments, and I hear, you know, we need to go out to neighborhoods, we need to have workshops, we need to put stickers on boards. I mean, wonderful suggestions, but I just have to remind the council and the community that we haven't gone into that phase yet. Our goal was to get, put something on paper for people to react to. And from that reaction, you know, we have developed a draft kind of workbook that hasn't been distributed yet, that talks about in detail all of the different descriptions, some of the metrics, some of the benefits and trade-offs. What, I had a staff meeting today, and I was talking to my staff about anytime we give a message to the public, we need to start with the why. You know, why are we doing this? And then, work together with the community to find out what the what is. And so, with the public engagement process, that's what we plan to do, is go out, educate the public about the issues, go to neighborhood meetings, have speaker series, have workshops, and tell them about the why we need to do anything at all, if we need to do anything at all, and then talk about, here's some possible whats, here are some possible methods to get that done.
If I might, I'll just say from a staff perspective, this has been quite a charge. It's consumed staff quite a bit. It's not, a general plan is not required by law. There are some elements and some things that we need to do, and I think housing element being one. I think that over time, Dante and I have talked about the process a lot. There are certain things that have been some common themes, some of which I think have been mentioned already. I think we might be thinking, or perhaps you are better articulating and saying what we might do differently. I think that there's been some confusion about, you know, the roads, and those continue to, that continues to come forward. However, the interests, I think, are pretty consistent, and again, some of them were named the transportation, the open space, that kind of thing. The core, I think, has gotten the most traction with some refinement, I think, attached to it. I think that we can, and Dante can say more, he's got great experience with general plans, but I think that we can perhaps change the process or amend the process, whatever word we want to use, to focus, to use your word, on some of these elements, I'll use the word "elements," that seem to have a lot of interest within the community, and try to tackle those. So, that's one approach, and then the other approach is looking at smaller groups or neighborhoods. I would put an "and" between those two things. I think we can do both of those. I don't think it's "or." I think we can try to look at these by elements, by areas, whatever we want to call them, and then be able to bring them out and do, yes, we haven't started that community input process, but perhaps it might be easier, not easier, but clearer by focusing on particular areas and getting, and dealing with those individually instead of the big general plan process. I think that other communities have done something similar to that. Again, I'm learning from Dante and his experience, and we've had lots of conversations around this. Don't mean to put you on the spot right this second, but perhaps you can comment, but I think it's possible for us to do that, and perhaps we could bring back a plan to you of what that might look like if there's an interest in us doing something like that.
So, I, I'm, based on our experience in working through the process, through this general plan process, there seems to be a lot of general support for open space preservation and conservation. There is a lot of support for looking at traffic issues on a citywide basis and working with the county and others to try to figure out our traffic problems. Sea level rise is a definite threat, and we're working with the Coastal Commission and the OPC to just figure out policies for that. And then, I think there is some energy around some modest improvements to kind of the downtown area. The city council is not obligated to direct any changes at all, as Magda talked about. It's our job as staff to just try to provide you with enough information to make policy decisions, but if council wanted to focus this to the downtown or Compact Core and see maybe more modest or more information or detail that preserved the historic culture of the downtown, we can definitely do that. And take a look citywide at other things like habitat, our special habitat preservation, like I said, open space, traffic, and climate change, I think is another issue that I think we need to address, and we need to develop some city policies around.
Focused and clear, I think that's the two things that I'd like to see. Councilmember Ruttig?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, I think it's really important to tie all these components back to the guiding principles that the group as a whole has already bought off on. And you mentioned a couple, you know, it's open space preservation, improvements in traffic flow. I think everybody would agree that we need some more diversity in our housing. I don't have the complete list of guiding principles with me, but just tie it back to those principles. Because I've heard a couple of people say, coming to meetings before us, well, you know, we, as a group, we've already, you know, agreed on this, but we don't see it in your, you know, scenarios. You know, where's the connection to what we've already talked about? So, you know, we start with the goals, and then we start talking about strategies and tactics, and I think we need to be, have a clear path of how all those things are linked together, and where elements show up, and they're not linked to the guiding principles, then we need to have a discussion about, you know, what to do about that. But if we can just, you know, create a clear path and linkage between all these things, I think that'll help us, you know, move along.
And Councilmember Ruttig, we've heard the same concerns, and so, we developed a matrix that showed the different scenarios and the elements and how that links to the guiding principles, and we provided that to the public. Now, some people may disagree with that, and that's perfectly fine. We've heard it doesn't tie back to the guiding principles, but we want to get down to, what does that mean? You know, how, what do we do about that comment? I'm not sure where doesn't it tie, what part of the plan? And I think, once we get to the community process and more dialogues and communication with the council, planning commission, and others, hopefully we'll get down to the heart of that. But it's kind of been this open-ended kind of concern where we thought we've tied it back to the general plan, but there's been no communication after that.
And I do think, you know, one way to move it along, our neighborhood meetings, actually going into the neighborhoods, you know, maybe it's, you know, a staff member or two and two council members or whatever, going into a neighborhood and just, maybe it's two neighborhoods together, you know, like Paris Avenue and the one north of that, what have you, but just let people know ahead of time, and then bring material and try to get people, you know, to sort of commit. I know that's difficult. People will change their minds, but if we can neighborhood by neighborhood or area by area, you know, start nailing things down, and I think neighborhood outreach is one way to do that.
Yeah, I, I, that is the way. Because I think we need to focus what we're doing, but then focus specifically for different areas and then come back, so as I think, I think we just need to be clear about the whole process, and I think that will get more people engaged and have more workshops about it and more opportunities, and not, and not trying to do all of this like right there. So, we spread it out more, so.
Breaking it into manageable pieces.
Exactly, exactly. That's the key. Councilwoman Vice Mayor Qualcheck?
So, we're saying, is the consensus I'm hearing both, which is I'm hearing more focus on a smaller number of things and more outreach, is that, because I'm trying to draw this into direction to staff, and I'm not 100% understanding what the, what I'm hearing. So, well, so I heard focus on the higher, on, don't boil the ocean, makes sense, I buy into that. I heard more outreach in the neighborhoods, I absolutely buy into that. So, is that what we're hearing, and if so?
And more. Magda, what have you heard?
That's what I heard. No, I think, no, I think that's, that's good. I think we-
That's why you get the award.
Yeah. We, I think we can go back and sort through the information. I think it's consistent, we're using perhaps different terminology, but I think we're getting the gist of, we're kind of, you know, talking here a lot, I think we-
If I can just clarify just a little bit, what I heard was, we wanted to focus on the downtown area specifically for now. I heard that we want to look at sea level rise and how that impacts, will impact our city in the future and decisions we need to make about that. I heard that we need to work on traffic and, so our whole circulation system. I heard that open space and conservation element is an important part of it, and also I heard, well, I'm not sure I heard this, but I agree that climate change is also a big topic that should be incorporated into our policies.
And tying it back to the guiding principles.
And tying them back to the guiding principles.
It doesn't sound like a lot less.
Yeah. I think it's a little more clear and focused.
Actually, it is.
It is, and I like the term manageable pieces. I think that is helpful.
I mentioned that I did talk to staff today about, you know, sea level rise analysis and how we're going to need to meet, you know, the terms of the agreement with the Ocean Protection Council and the state's, you know, climate change. There are, there are guidelines about how far out we need to, you know, evaluate sea level rise impacts 2050, 2100, blah, 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 but I guess there is some gray area, but, so that'll be worked out, you know, in the next iteration, I think, of illustrations.
Right, and just on that point, we did have a conversation with the OPC staff and Coastal Commission staff, and we agreed to the terms of our grant agreement to use the approved guidelines for sea level rise. As you probably know, they haven't been approved yet, and we will be incorporating though, and we will be meeting with them on a more regular basis. I think we decided on a monthly, so we want to be in full compliance with that.
And Congresswoman Spear and Supervisor Dave Pine and Assemblymember Gordon have been really focusing on sea level rise. I thought it was a little more to the bayside, but certainly they're going to include us in there, so I think we need to stay on top of the work that they're doing and the grants that are available on that as well. Those have been some fascinating workshops they've held. Those have been some fascinating workshops they've held, I think two of them already. Yeah.
If I may, Mayor, I think I didn't want to throw more work at staff, but I think if we could kind of bring this down, then the other pieces we'll work our way through. The only thing on sea level rise, in my opinion, is our wastewater treatment plant. That's going to be a big concern for us. It's going to be a big concern for the whole Bay Area is our wastewater treatment plant. So Sam is going to have to look at that very seriously here in the future, where that's going to be moving. So I think from my perspective, thank you for listening to some of our points, and it's for just discussion, information only.
All right, and staff is good. Okay, thank you, and thank you, counsel, for your input and clarification on that. All right, next item is item number nine, amendments to the fiscal year 2014-15 annual city budget related to judgment obligation bonds, Fund 017778 and 79.
Yeah, this was on the council agenda in December when it was a very large agenda. We brought, we split that item up and brought back to you, the council, I think at the last meeting, sort of the miscellaneous amendments, if you will. This was the big one, and so we've done more research. Our interim finance director, Brian Mora, who you've met, did lots and lots and lots of research. So he'll go through a little presentation, and what we're proposing is to have you adopt several amendments to, in my language, and he'll tell you the technical finance language, but nothing has changed in terms of the financing, but the record keeping was not consistent with the actions that were taken. So he'll walk you through that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and City Manager Gonzalez, Brian Mora, interim finance director. As the city manager indicated, shortly after I started, this item was on your consent calendar. It was one of the first items that I sat down with the city manager and talked about. I think we both agreed after looking at it that it needed more review, and so we, I asked that it be pulled. And so tonight we'll give you what is hopefully a very thorough discussion of the retirement of those bonds last August. First slide talks about the mid-year budget process, and as I'm sure many of you are aware, cities tend to adopt budgets in the summer, usually in June, and then at mid-year, which typically happens around February, there is a mid-year adjustment where you look at the revenues and expenses during the year, and you look at any needed amendments and adjustments midterm and come to the council. And as the manager indicated earlier, we did come back to you at your last meeting to do 60, roughly 61,000 of those amendments outside of this area, the judgment obligation bonds. And so this meeting is designed to focus, or this item, on those bonds. It reflects all of the actions that were taken by the city and the staff at that time to retire the bonds as of August 1st of last year. And I'm also proposing an optional amendment, an adjustment, which the council may wish to entertain related to the land assets. Some history, the settlement that the city reached regarding the litigation was in 2007. The city settled that litigation, as was mentioned earlier during the library discussion, for roughly $18 million. The city received property as part of that settlement, and that also went on the city's books back in 2007 at that roughly the same amount as the settlement. That's where that number apparently came from. A year later, the city negotiated or successfully negotiated a settlement with the ABAG Plan Insurance Pool related to this matter and received $5 million. And that $5 million was applied by the city at that time towards the settlement amount, leaving roughly $13 million to be financed. Because, as I'm sure you know from the earlier discussion, when you finance bonds, you also have to include in the issuance costs and interest. The city in 2009 issued $16.9 million roughly of bonds, and those were issued in two series, 2009A in $5.8 million and 2009B, $10.9 million. On the second set of bonds, the 2009B, they are taxable, but they also receive a interest subsidy payment each year from the federal government under the ARRA, the Recovery Act legislation that was adopted several years ago. So in effect, the bonds basically cover the settlement amount less the original ABAG settlement. And that was done primarily because obviously at the time in 2009, the ABAG settlement was in hand. It was not known in 2009 whether or not the city would get any additional settlement money. Moving ahead, in 2012 and 13, the city received a total of $13.15 million in insurance settlements from ICW. This came $10 million in 2012 and another $3.15 million in 2013. After the receipt of these funds, the city council had two meetings in March and April of 2013 to discuss what to do with those proceeds and how to utilize those towards an early retirement of the judgment obligation bonds. The agreement was adopted by, or there was a resolution adopted by the city council directing the then-city manager to execute a new escrow deposit and trust agreement. It did a couple of things, as the slide shows. It established a sinking fund at the trustee, U.S. Bank. It also required the city to redeem the bonds early, using the proceeds from the ICW settlement and city funds. It required the city to redeem the 2009A bonds on August 1st of 2014, and it required the city to redeem all of the 2009B bonds remaining on August 1st of 2019. It also had language that said that the city manager and finance director are directed by the council to take, quote, "any and all actions necessary to implement this agreement." So we move on to the discussion of the redemption of the 2009A bonds. In June of 2014, roughly mid-June, as looking through the documents, the city received what's called a demand notice or a payment due notice from the trustee, U.S. Bank, per the earlier agreement. And essentially, that amount was paid off with three different items. The first were the funds available at the trustee. That was basically a portion of the ICW settlement that had been invested, and that was roughly $3.9 million. The second piece of that payment was the 2014-15 payment as scheduled that is in your current year budget, $426,000. And then the third component is what I best would describe as a true-up payment, namely the difference between the amount of money in the sinking fund at the trustee, your budgeted amount, and then the difference. And so that demand came in in June. The city staff and the finance department then began processing a payment, which essentially was the 14-15 payment of $426,000 plus the true-up payment, roughly $887,000. That payment was approved by the finance director, the interim finance director at the time, and the interim city manager at the time. The funds were transferred by the city to the trustee in roughly mid-July with an effective date of August 1st, and on August 1st, as required, the bonds were in fact redeemed. Now we move on to the budget amendments, and essentially the intent here is to make six amendments to your current budget that will reflect the actions that occurred in June through August of 2014. The first two amendments have to do with the allocation of the ICW settlement funds. There is a difference between the way those funds were divided between the two funds in your budget versus the way they ended up being divided at the trustee. So that's the first two amendments, the change that needs to be made. In the second two amendments, we are reflecting the amount of money that was held by the trustee on August 1st of 2014, which includes interest and includes other, you know, funds that are available under the terms of the bond. So again, this amendments three and four are, again, sort of a true-up process. It is likely that regardless of numbers that might have been in your budget prior, that there would have been a need to true-up, to do something along these lines. And then finally, we have amendments five and six, which recognize the additional 461-339 true-up payment. And so after the council takes action on those six amendments, your budget for 2014-15 will fully reflect the actions that were taken on August 1st of 2014. Now we move on to the discussion of the land assets. Originally, when the city settled the litigation, they received, as I mentioned earlier, the Beechwood property land assets, and those were parked in Funds 77 and 78 as an asset of those two funds and potentially could have been used, although were not used, to help retire those bonds or make the bond payments. They're basically bond security. As I noted earlier, that land was originally, carried the value of the settlement amount the city paid. That number has not changed since 2009. And in any transaction, at least tonight, on the land, I would recommend that you, for now, continue that practice. But the significance of receiving the ICW, the two payments, is that the land is no, again, in staff's point of view, in my opinion, the land is no longer needed towards those 2009B bonds. And so the council has an option, I believe. And what I'm recommending is that the council consider creating a new fund, what I'm calling Fund 79 Judgment Obligation Bond Land, and transferring the land assets that are currently sitting in Funds 77 and 78 to this new fund. What that would do, as I indicate on the slide, it would clearly separate the land assets from your monetary assets. I think it would make it clearer to everyone where the land is versus where the money is, as opposed to mixing them, which is what you have today. And I think it also will more clearly facilitate the council review and discussion of the land assets that you have talked about having later this calendar year. And again, I'll stress that with Amendment 7, you don't need to take that action, but I think it would facilitate some of your future discussions, so I do recommend it. And then finally, just to wrap up, I wanted to comment on the process and sort of where you've come and where you are. I think as some of the council members alluded to earlier, you're at a major milestone, and I think at some point, if you haven't already, you should celebrate. You've retired a major chunk of your bonds over a decade early. That's pretty impressive. Certainly is, an outsider coming in, impressive to me. Part of this action is it frees up for you roughly $500,000 per year in your general fund that you've been using towards the debt service for the A bonds later this calendar year. And that relates to your earlier discussion, obviously, about the library bonds, because as you know, the 30-year debt service on the lease revenue bonds is under $500,000. So even though you're going to have even more money freed up in 2019, you could literally start or handle that debt service right now. In terms of the B bonds, the city and federal payments will continue until 2019, because that is the first, what they call call date, or the first time you can redeem them if you have the money, which obviously with the ICW money you do now. When that is freed up, that's going to, or when they are redeemed on 8/1/2019, that will free up roughly an additional $600,000 per year. And you put those two together, that is the roughly million one that was being described at the earlier item. And one other observation that I'll make here is that, again, as someone who's not intimately involved in this process until I arrived here, I think we can safely say, or I can safely say, that it would have been a best practice, if I can use that term, for the city staff who was here at the time to have brought these amendments to the council in mid-June. I recognize that, you know, having been a finance director for many years myself, in addition to being assistant city manager, that mid-June and early July are a very busy time in the city and certainly in the finance department. You're closing out a fiscal year, you're adopting a budget, you're printing the final budget document, et cetera. My take on this, and I've shared this with the city manager and with staff, is that, you know, it's easy to go back in history or be a backseat driver, whatever term you want to use. You know, I'm sure that we all wish that before that final budget was printed, after it was adopted by the council last June, that the staff might have taken another couple weeks, and before they printed or finalized it, they went back to the council and made all these amendments. That would have been a best practice, but as we now know, that didn't happen. And the staff at the time saved it for a mid-year adjustment, and of course, those two folks and some of the other staff members are no longer with us. So that's why we have what we have. As far as next steps, I think I would obviously recommend that you take action on amendments one through six, and that you also consider the optional amendment seven. And the final point I want to make is that, you know, in addition to your scheduled discussion of the land assets later this year, and regardless of whether you move them to a new fund or you keep them where you are, you'll have that discussion, is I want to highlight the fact that when you get to 2019, this whole process will happen again. There will be a demand letter from the trustee, the same bank. There will be an accounting of how much money is in that sinking fund, and there will be the payment of the 2019 amount in your budget, but there will also be a true-up payment, again, or a true-up amount. It may be a payment if there's not quite enough money to make that final payment, or it might even be a credit. You know, we don't know yet. But I do want to highlight that now so that everybody can think about, both at the staff and the council level, of how that might happen maybe a little better this next time. So with that, I'd be happy to field any questions the council may have.
Thank you for that explanation. So basically, we approved to pay off something, and it was printed, and there was additional funds, but the true-up or the amendment wasn't brought back to us sooner.
That's correct. And the way I understand the documents, and I can certainly defer to the city attorney or others, is it appears that in the document number one, you, the city, was required to pay off all the bonds at 8/1/2014, and the council, through its 2013 actions, gave the city manager and the finance director the authority to do so, which they did. So I think technically, everything that was supposed to happen in June through August of 2014 did. But again, and I would couch it in the terms of what I call a best practice, it probably would have been a best practice to bring all of that to the council when the staff had it, because they had it in mid-June, from what I saw. Again, it was a week or two after they'd just finished the budget, and they were just wrapping up the fiscal year, so I can understand how they probably were under a lot of pressure, and there were people coming and going, and there are a lot of factors there, but that would have been a best practice.
Well, thank you for explaining that in layman's terms, too. Councilmembers, questions?
I think, just to thank you for clarifying this. It's not like any money was taken or lost, or there was no, I think it says here, these amendments do not have a net fiscal impact in the staff report, so I think that's very important. So I would, I guess we have to read the whole resolution out here, Tony, or what would be proper if I make a motion?
Motion would just be to adopt the recommended resolution.
All right, and I think we have a few more questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Riddick?
First, I want to thank staff for a really excellent staff report. You know, I thought, you know, for a lot of complicated information, it was, you know, pretty straightforward and easy to follow, I thought. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. One question I had was, would we also move the Glen Cree property into this potentially new fund and not just the Beechwood property?
I believe that's an option the council has. Right now, the Glen Cree property is in the general fund as a land asset. It could be moved to its own fund. I guess the only other question would be, would you move it to a fund called land assets, you know, judgment obligation bonds, or maybe another land assets account? But it could in fact be moved to this new fund if you desire it.
I've always just thought it was curious that it was, you know, an asset of a property that we were not going to be selling in the short term. It just didn't seem to me to belong in the general fund, so I thought perhaps there's some other, you know, reasonable place.
Yeah, I guess to Councilmember Riddick's question, and quite frankly, I had the same question when I saw it in your CAFR and your budget, is there is a memo to the council from the former city manager and the former finance director that does, there is a sentence at the very end saying that this land could be used as open space or it could be sold, and I think that is the hook by which the auditors are treating it the same as the Beechwood property. And again, I think that it is an area where potentially the council may wish to have either a separate study session or a study session on the status of that property, potentially.
Right.
I think that the distinction really is in the manner in which the city acquired the property, so it may be appropriate to have both parcels in the same fund, but I would want to go back and look at the terms by which the Glen Cree property was granted to the city and make sure there are no negative implications associated with that.
Sure, yeah. And I do think that, I like the idea of adopting the best practice of, you know, having the council, you know, make adjustments pretty close to the time that they're going to be made so that we can, you know, track these things better. In fact, maybe this, maybe we need to agendize this as part of the budget, but I think it would be good if we could revisit... would be good if we could revisit, you know, the budget on a quarterly, rather than just twice-a-year basis, so that we're tracking things and seeing where things are going, you know, between accounts, and not being, you know, surprised by this stuff. I know when I was in the council previously, we did it on a quarterly basis. We don't necessarily have to amend anything every time it comes before us, but at least get a report, you know, how we're doing, how our revenues and expenses, you know, tracking, how are we covering our debts and stuff. So I'd like to throw that out there.
We've talked about that, and it is a best practice in other cities of doing a quarterly financial, and we'd like to start to implement that.
Great. And then I just have one last thing. It may be a little sensitive, but, so, on page 2 of 6, at the very top, we talk about Budget Amendment 5 and 6 reflected transfer of $461,339 that was made by the city. So I understand why that was made, but it did come from the general fund. And reading the council direction from the year before, it looked like the council was giving direction for, you know, funds to be, to come from the, you know, the insurance account. So I'd like us to be careful of the general fund, and I would have liked, if I were on the council, for that transaction to come back to the council for an okay, for a sign-off. Half a million dollars out of the general fund. I understand the council gave direction, I actually thought the council direction in some instances was, was pretty broad. That made me a little uncomfortable, but, but I kind of understand, you know, how it happened. So those are just a couple of comments that I would like to make. And I just want to mention, too, that I do support the idea of Budget Amendment 7, creating the separate account. Seems to make sense to me. So just, thank you for this. Appreciate it.
Good, Mayor. So, yeah, thank you for the staff report and the analysis. Very clear, very crisp, and I like numbers, so that works for me. The, I just want to say that I like the idea of creating the separate land account, separating, you know, making clear what type of assets these are. So I would support the optional item 7. And then further investigating, I think our, if it makes sense to keep our land assets, what's clean accounting, right? If clean accounting is for our land assets to be in the same land asset account, then maybe that, come back to the council, and we can make that amendment, then Glen Cree and other land assets. I just, whatever's clean, appropriate accounting is what I want to, what I want to do. So, that's it.
Council, any more questions, comments?
No. I'd be willing to move to adopt the resolution approving the amendments to 2014, 15 Annual City Budget in Funds 0177 and 78, and creating a new fund, 79, as follows. I believe there was some direction also about the Vandenberg property, Glen Cree property, in that, so I would put that in my motion. I don't know.
I would recommend that we bring that back, too, after we get a chance to analyze.
Oh, right. I apologize. Yeah. Once we see that. So, dropping that, then, would you like me to read 1 through 6, or not necessar-
1 through 7 as recommended.
Okay. Okay. 1 through 7 as recommended by staff. I shall move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Aye.
Councilmember Moll?
Aye, and here's your $18 million. This is what we got. This is the bond I was given when I signed the bond funds for $18 million. It's in the-
We all got one for $18 million.
$18 million bucks. So someday we'll put, actually, you know what? We could put it in the vault.
That's a good idea.
It's yours.
I love it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're in the middle of roll call.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Aye.
Councilmember Moll?
Yes.
Chair Braver?
Yes. All right, that carries, and yes, that would be an excellent item to put in-
My name's on it.
-in the vault. We've all got one, we all, yeah. So thank you very much, staff, for that report and clarification. We're on to the exciting fun, number 10, approving a comprehensive citywide sign program. And Dante will be up to explain more.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This actually started a few months back. Council put in their goals for the city to look at some type of entryway signage and signage for the city. There are a lot of values for creating a comprehensive message and image for the city, throughout the city, for our residents and our visitors. John Doughty is our senior program manager, analyst for the city. He'll be making the presentation, starting off. And then we also have Simon Andrews from Graphic Solutions, who will be finishing the presentation. So I'll turn it over to John.
And while he's going up there, I was a part of this sign committee, along with several other members who couldn't be here this evening, but former Mayor Allen Alafano is here, he's a part of the committee. And this was over several, several months and different reiterations, and it was, you know, based on feedback that we've seen and what people have seen, you know, just directions in, around town, which are so critical for us. Where's this, where's that? And we may know where it is, but others don't. And you can't just say it's around the corner from, you know, so-and-so's house. Tourists don't know what that is. So please, go on.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, my first council meeting, so, thank you. It is also a pleasure to be here with this program and to be with Simon Andrews, who's with Graphic Solutions, who's going to do all the heavy lifting and talk you through the designs and the concepts. I'm going to just briefly work you through sort of what we're looking for tonight, which include the requested actions, which are, they're on the screen, which is to look at and hopefully approve the conceptual designs, and direct us to provide those to the planning commission and through the directors' actions to go forward to a formal approval. We're also ultimately looking for direction down the road to how do we prioritize, and as part of the capital improvements programming and planning efforts that's going to be going forward, as you've been talking about a lot tonight. This is certainly one of those items that could be included down the road as well, and we'll go from there. I want to give a great thanks and a big thanks for the advisory committee, who, some here present tonight and some who could not be here tonight. They did all the heavy lifting here with staff and assisting staff, and assisting our consultant, working through this, doing the surveys, and taking their valuable time and providing that back to the community. So that's really where this is coming from. As the council appointed that advisory committee, the role of that was to come back to this council and to make the recommendations, and that's what this package coming to you is with. With that, I'll turn over to Simon to walk you through the objectives, and then I'll come back and just finish up the work. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and good evening, Mayor and council. It's been a pleasure to work with your staff and your community members on this program. Quite a pleasure, and really an honor to have this assignment. You know, you could find your way around destinations with your Google map, of course, with your Google app. But Google doesn't help you, doesn't welcome you to a community. So that's one of the advantages of a physical, physical welcome on the ground as you enter a community. So that was one of our objectives. You know, this program sort of addresses three of the guiding principles. It enhances circulation, connectivity, encourages greater downtown vitality, and definitely accommodates visitors. So I just noticed that it's in line with the guiding principles for your general plan update as well. Also establishes a consistent brand, if you will, or identity for the community. Right now, are you really aware, when you, when you enter Half Moon Bay, that you've entered this community? There are great opportunities to do that, so we've looked at those opportunities, too. Let's see if we can do this. You have destinations and attractions, which are mostly unknown or invisible to visitors without a good program like this. And then we looked at materials, appropriate materials for best value for the long term. And then there are issues, they'll be permitting issues local, some are in Caltrans right-of-way, and some are local rights-of-way, so we needed to look at that. So we have a kind of a program that addresses those things. The first thing we looked at was, how do we represent the community in a consistent way? We adapted the logo, which you'd worked on earlier. We have a consistent types, type font, color palette, and a way of presenting those things. We showed a variety of concepts with, but the committee rejected any idea of sort of contemporary materials, modern. The idea was really to reinforce the image of the community as a more rustic, if you way, if you will, coastal community. So we wanted to represent that. And so some of the signs, even though the, the identity is represented pretty much consistently throughout the program, the mountings of these can be, can be different. So there might be a piling situation, and this is kind of a typical view, we still need to select precise locations. But just to give you an idea how something like, this might look along the coast highway. And there might be a lower version, if it's more appropriate. So heights could vary, we would get more specific when we have the exact location. The concept is that these might be along Caltrans right-of-way, but, but might be in private property, if possible. They might be illuminated, not internally, but, but from a, like a ground fixture, something like that. So there is some illumination, and contemplated for these. And that's how the shorter one might appear. And there was an idea of having a little different mounting, especially on the 92, entering from the east, and it might be, you might call it more of a kind of a craftsman style, if you will. There's an opportunity for a kind of a low-key monument in the median, existing median. Alternatively, a larger version might be on the right-hand side of the, of the street, might, excuse me, might replace a section of the existing sign. So that whole, we would look at that whole display and maybe separate the identity, the city identity and entry part, from all the service emblem. So that's the, the concept with this. And then as you travel, especially Caltrans right-of-way, these signs are meant to be Caltrans compliant with their messages, type fonts, colors, reflectivity, so forth, sizes, calling out the major, in generic terms, destinations. Beaches, trails, downtown, for instance. And this, again, is a typical, or just a schematic location, potentially. There's also an opportunity for kind of directory signs, and really two levels. We need some signs that show citywide destinations and attractions, and then we need some also for the downtown, which are much more specific, and that could list, could list the destinations, the businesses. So we look at these, it really is two-level things, depending on where they're located. Some, some would be generic, more civic, more permanent locations, like the citywide one. And then when you get to the downtown one, we can have more commercial destinations if we, if we chose. And there are potential locations, one could be outside of the, the visitor center, right now, for instance, so forth. There are various locations. As you, as you enter the downtown and travel along Main Street, traffic slows, type fonts can be more refined and smaller, but there's still the need for directional signs as you enter Main Street from either direction to highlight the more specific destinations as you get closer and closer to them. And this is kind of a typical view along Main Street, arriving from the south, again to reinforce your, your entry. We looked at a gateway possibility, a spanning sign that could be one of these, certainly at the north end of Main Street as you approach the downtown, and also in the future from the south end as well, a spanning main, and really inviting you to your special downtown district. There was some discussion around what it should be called, how it should be represented, and the committee agreed that the most important feature was name the city and then highlight it accordingly. We looked at designs. Again, location is very schematic, and we may want to move it more close to the 92, for instance, in this view. This is entering from the, from the 92. It could move closer, so you get a better view of it from the 92. And then it would be, we had some discussion about illumination, and the committee agreed that it needed to be lighted. You don't want a sign that has the lights off, but doesn't need to be illuminated all the time. There might be a timer. And it should be subtle illumination as well, it's not, not Las Vegas. So, I think that's, oh, yeah. Very schematically, again, we came up with a system, a program of locating these signs, typical messages, typical locations, just to create a comprehensive program that has entry signs, directional signs, two levels, and also two jurisdictions, and, and the wayfinding signs. So with that, any questions? I'm happy to entertain.
I can share a couple of things with, with council. When you see what's anchoring the signs, we've, we've got two styles, and that was because we wanted to have them in two different areas. So at the end of town, closer to the harbor, you saw more of those, those pillars. But yet, we didn't feel that that theme resonated throughout the entire community, especially downtown. And that's why we had chosen the more of the craftsman-style pillars. That was one of them. So, but we wanted to be consistent with using that logo, not using the official city seal, but have, keeping, to adopt this as, as our branding.
And I think there were just two additional slides to complete our presentation.
All right. So, sometimes it is, and usually it is, in part about the money. Clearly, this program is really designed around, hopefully, a public-private partnership. That is already occurring with the chamber. We think there are other opportunities, and certainly those are things that this community needs to look at and will continue to work through. We do have roughly $40,000 in savings available from the overall project that is in the current capital improvement program. So that will provide some opportunity to look at, how do we spend that, and what signs, and where. Ultimately, you know, these were, these are going to have to be developed in a phased approach and looked at going down the road and moving with that, and some prioritization is going to have to be given to that. And again, that is a likely time, and part is to look at that when, in the context of the current budget cycle coming forward, the CIP, and then down the road in, in subsequent processes. So again, what we're asking tonight is for the conceptual approval, and included with that would be then the direct staff to go ahead and start to prepare the special sign program permit and move this forward. We will also be in that process, looking at more definitively where various signs and those components should and would be. That will give us an accounting for the number of signs we're looking at in the, in the larger plan. And again, depending on how budgets look and how the private partners come along in their process as well, we can come back to the council at a later point with an implementation strategy based on available funding and funding to the future, and how you proceed with that. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Any thoughts on it? Do you like it? Do you like it?
I got an opinion.
That's good. Why don't I want to, okay, good, you have an opinion, and that is?
So, one of my single greatest accomplishments in City Council is the establishment of the new sign on 92. It only took two years to put the sign up, and I'm-
Your buddy helped, too.
We, we very nearly painted it ourselves. So, so if you, when you're driving down 92 on the right-hand side, you'll see a white sign, "Welcome to Half Moon Bay." That was, that was sort of a dilapidated thing several years ago. We said, "Wow, what a terrible way to welcome people to our community." And so we bootstrapped it, and we got that put together. So, so I like the new designs. I do have a couple of questions. One, I did, did a quick peek during my research, or my homework for tonight. There's a lot of the use of the words "city of" on the sign. And it kind of goes either way when you look at what other communities do. Sometimes it says "city of," sometimes people know they are perhaps in a city. And that may be, where I'm going with this, that may be unnecessary. From a, I'm looking at this purely from a branding perspective. I like the signs, I like the, I like the designs. I'm thinking, where is this going to show itself? Is it to show itself in photographs? Is it going to show itself, so as is for signage and direction, I'm good. But in terms of promotion branding message, that may be unnecessary clutter on this line, or on the, on the sign. The other thing is, it's one piece, "city of." The other thing is, for the larger signs, not the wayfinding, but the larger signs, I would like to see the, California included as well. So like, so if you go, there's the medium-sized ones, if you can kind of go up a couple of slides, he's got control there. Couple of previous slides.
For instance, any of these, yeah. We can incorporate that, yeah.
You know where I'm going, a couple more?
Okay.
Like that one, for example. So for, for all, for all the non-wayfinding signs, this is where people are going to come and say, "Oh, look, I'm in Half Moon Bay. I'm, I'm visiting Half Moon Bay from Central Valley, from Europe, or wherever. I want their photos that they're going to post on social media to say, 'Half Moon Bay, California.'" I think that would be, I think it helps the sign, I think it's kind of a smart branding, marketing thing to do, and hopefully not a, a big change to your work that just undoes all my fine work on the original white sign. No, I think it's a great, it's great work, but I would like to see, I would hear your opinion on "city of," but I'd like to see the word "California" incorporated to the larger signs.
Well, I agree with you that people will see these, and they'll, it'll give their city exposure beyond just the visitor who's standing there. Every time, we've designed several dozen of these overhead signs, the arch signs, and nobody's ever regretted the investment so far. And they become, they show up on, on postcards and stuff on the other side of the world. So I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, with touting the fact that you are a city. And I mean, it's a, it is a unique place, it's not just a territory, it is a city, and it's, it's a minor piece. I, I think it's good. But your idea of including California, that's, that's a good point, too.
I, I could be flexible on "city of," but on California, I'm a little firmer on that as well. But the reason, the "city of," it's, so if I look at it, what does a, so it's marketing BS, but what does the human eye have to interpret? "City of" is one more thing they have to process.
That's why it's a very minor-
It's not a big deal if it's there, but knowing that you're in California and they could center around, I think that's pretty important.
It's up to you, yeah.
So I think we added the California as you, for a big one, if we put a gateway, you know, toward the end of 92 going on to Maine, we wanted that to tell California. I don't know what that would look like, we could play around, take the "city of" part out and put "California" in that, and not desecrate any more of, of this piece?
Oh, I'm not suggesting that we change the, I'm not suggesting we change the arch at all, only the smaller signs. Maybe you go up one more-
No, no, that's, okay, so that's what I'm saying.
I'm looking at Marina's PowerPoint, which is why. So if you go up one previous slide-
So, so right here, instead of "city of," put "California." And don't put anything else underneath that.
I think you match it to the arch.
Oh, the arch, you want to look at the arch, okay.
You match it to the arch. Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think you match it to the arch, and so for the, for the larger signs, that might be along the highway, "Half Moon Bay, California."
If we could bring it back to the advisory committee for branding logo information.
Sorry. I, I think that helps, honestly. We could make that decision right now and ask that "California" be added to the bottom of the larger signs akin to the, the arch, and be done.
See, we could throw a little bear on top, too, of "California," some-
Like Lodi, yeah.
A snowy plover.
No pumpkins.
No pumpkins. I could live with that. Excellent suggestion, Vice Mayor Kowalczek.
So you do that on the, on the entry signs, but not necessarily on the directional signs?
Yeah. Yes, just on the-
On the entry-
Yes. But wayfinding, I think it's unnecessary, but, sorry. Anything that might be along the roadway-
Then it does get to be a lot of things, yeah. Thank you, okay.
I've really liked the color scheme. The only things that are driving me a little nuts, and I don't know why, it could just be a, you know, personal quirk, are the caps on top of the posts. They're like, you know, they're a little busy to me or something. I, I really liked the ones for the beach that were just the straight posts, kind of a thing, but I understand why we'd, we'd want to do something different downtown, but those little knobs on the top of the caps are-
The little knobs, the little finials, they could go away.
They could go away. I think there was a bunch of different caps that were used, yeah.
But the actual little, little knobs or finials, I'm not attached to those myself.
I don't know.
But also, when it comes down to acquiring this, we're going to have an architectural design and all that as well.
But basically, I think it's really nice, so.
Well, the, the plan is actually to have council approve these conceptual designs. When it gets to the planning commission level, we'll start talking about materials, and we'll, we'll talk about some of the finer details, and we'll have potential locations a little bit more firm than we do tonight. So tonight, we're just asking you, is this conceptually okay? Is this enough detail for the council to give us the go-ahead to go to the next step?
I think so, if you move the little finials on top of that big sign, add "California" to the other ones.
High five.
Councilmember Penrose, do you have input on this?
I just want to say that I like the lacy effect, the see-through effect on the large signs. I think it's wonderful.
That's my idea, thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right.
I'd like to make a motion. Do we need a motion, just direction?
Yes.
Do we need a motion? Move to direct staff per the recommendations with the addition of, remove of the finials, and addition of "California" on the roadway signs.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
If I may make a comment, I'd like, if, if the sign on 92 becomes available as scrap, I would like to acquire it for my man cave, thank you.
And at, due to the lateness of the hour and our wonderful Park and Rec Commission person sitting waiting, we'll move item number 12 up, and we'll come back to number 11. Thank you for hanging in for the last four, five hours with us. So we will have nomination to the Recreation Commission.
Yes, so it's my pleasure. Unfortunately, my past director, Suzanne Alusmina Bruce, had to step down due to business and other activities going on in her life. She's still part of the community, she's not leaving us, but Marsha Riley's just been an amazing individual in this community for a number of years with her number of activities, and is former member, so she knows the system. So I would like to place Marsha Riley's name in nomination for my position on Recreation Committee.
I'd like to second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I get that proclamation back I gave you last meeting? We'll just save it and change dates at another time. Can we just do a voice vote on this one? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes completely. Thank you, welcome back to Park and Rec, Marsha. All right, and you're welcome to stay to hear item number 11, giving policy direction regarding additional city funding of the Pillar Seadust Creek Bridge replacement. And we will be hearing from City Manager Magda Gonzalez.
I think your city attorney is going to be giving this, because it's an infrastructure replacement project, so naturally.
Thank you.
Now, the real reason is that this item relates to the cooperative agreement that we're working on with State Parks to build, to fund and build the pedestrian bridge across Pillar Seadust Creek that has been closed since last April. Right now, we've been exchanging drafts of the agreement with State Parks, and one of the terms that State Parks has included in its proposed language that we've also received indications that they're firm on is that if the cost of the project exceeds the $1.8 million that they've allocated to it, plus whatever money that we're able to obtain from the Coastal Conservancy pursuant to its grant agreement, that the city shall bear the full cost of that necessary to complete the project. So the, the grant agreement, which is a forward-looking document, would essentially commit the city to complete the project even if the cost exceeds the amount of grant funding that we have available for it. So I thought I'd go over that really briefly, and then just, and I don't think we'd need direction, per se, from the City Council, but just to provide you with this information, and when we bring it back for approval of the grant agreement, we can revisit the discussion if necessary. So as you recall, back in last fall, the City Council expressed a commitment of up to $100,000 toward repair, a temporary project to repair the bridge. The discussion later turned to replacement as probably the most feasible and cost-effective option to deal with it. And then in November, the City Council committed $130,000 of city funds for an assessment of the Pillar Seadust Creek Bridge's existing substructure and preliminary design to replace the existing worn-out bridge deck, which is the project that we're looking at right now, and that's, that's being developed. So just looking back at prior council direction, the amount of funds that the City Council has committed towards the project has already reached sort of the threshold of what you expressed an interest in funding previously. However, in November, we also received word from State Parks that they had appropriated $1.8 million for the cost of the bridge replacement project, which, based on their estimates, was, you know, within a fairly comfortable margin of what they estimated the project would cost. And in addition to that, the, we also received word in late November, and then in early December, the Coastal Conservancy approved a grant agreement that provides up to $200,000 toward the planning, design, permitting cost of the project. But there, but the funds are limited to, from the date the agreement is entered into, to the time that the State Park agreement becomes effective. So whatever funds are committed by the city in that period of time would be reimbursable, which probably would not use up the full $200,000, just given our timeline and the desire at this point to try to get the project done in the 2015 construction season. The most recent estimates that we have of the cost of the project are within the amount of money that's been allocated. The most current cost estimates indicate that with a 10% to 15% contingency included, the current project cost estimate is right around $1.8 million. So with the city's allocation of funding, with some portion of that funds being contributed by the Coastal Conservancy, and then with the $1.8 million allocated by State Parks, at present, should the, the budget estimates turn out to be correct, then the project would be fully funded without additional city resources. But there are additional costs that you have to consider. One is administrative costs to the city, which would be basically marshaling this project through the permit process, and then advertising for bids and going out to bid, and, and overseeing the construction. We estimate that that's an additional $100,000 or thereabouts of city funds that can't necessarily be, you know, linked to an expenditure but represents staff, overhead, and administrative time. As I indicated, the status of the agreement is that we hope to bring it back to you for approval in, in March, but that one of the provisions that we did not look favorably upon, but State Parks is not going to budge on apparently, is the provision that requires the city to cover the cost of any overruns beyond the $1.8 million, plus Coastal Conservancy money, plus funds that the city's already allocated. So if, for whatever reason, the, the project goes out to bid and comes back significantly higher than that, the city would be on the hook for the difference. And that is the current status of the project. Like I said, I don't think the council needs to give direction, because we will be bringing the agreement back to you to consider for your approval. But we wanted to give you this information now, or as soon as possible, because the agreement's not ready.
I just wanted to disclose that I do work for the Coastal Conservancy. Don't tell them I told you this, but you can ask for a contract or grant agreement augmentation for up to 15% of the total cost. So that is available on all of our projects. If it looks like, you know, we might, you know, need more at some point, we can ask for a 15% augmentation. The, the language, the State Parks language is standard in all state, you know, grant agreement contracts. It's not always enforced, but it's always there, and attorneys have been reluctant to remove that from the grant agreement, so it's just something that we have to deal with. You know, but in the future, any, if you need information about how it works, or how we do grant agreements, or whatever, please feel free to ask. I'm happy to at least, you know, not lobby my agency, of course, but provide you some basic information about how it works.
I, I think that's right, and I think that's kind of how the state is looking at this project, or at least how State Parks is looking at it. But the, the reality is, this isn't a grant that the city is receiving, it's the city stepping in to assist the state in building its own project-
Right, it's a little bit different, right.
-with, with funds appropriated by the state for that purpose, so. But, but I, I think you're right. My sense is that that's how the state looks at it, and, and that's why they're taking that position.
Yeah. And the agency always wants to, you know, work with everybody on it, so it's, I don't know about State Parks, but speaking for my own agency.
Maybe we can do a toll bridge.
Oh, that'd be worse for the library.
Thank you. Thank you for the update on this, and as we move along down this process, if we can just continuously get updates on this, because the community is really, really anxious to hear, and I know staff from the very beginning worked very hard. There was a lot of phone calls from all of us back and forth to get this, so it's longer than one would hope, but it's faster than what they first proposed it was going to be. So you don't need anything from us, there's just information. Thank you very much. And if there's nothing else, that's our last agenda item, and we're on about hour five. Staffer, thanks for hanging in there. Good meeting tonight, council, and we'll see you next month on March, on March 3rd. Thank you, good night.